I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to their beloved, which stands on our nation, under God, in the physical, in liberty and justice for all.
The Lord is we gather this evening, we thank you for this wonderful town that we live in, we thank you for the citizens of our town, and we thank you for the privilege that it is to serve this community. We ask for your strength, courage, and wisdom in all of our decisions. In your name we pray, amen. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our August 19 meeting. Gentlemen, if you had a chance to read the minutes, there were a couple of changes that were made from the time they were sent out in the packet, and she clarified those changes. I need a motion to either approve or amend the minutes.
I'll make the motion we approve the minutes as they were changed.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Josh Kirk, 5-0. Unfinished business. This is the public hearing for the confirmatory resolution. It'll be Resolution 19. This is creating an economic development area, and would, is it part of the process of granting a tax abatement on personal property to the tune of about $10 million worth of improvement? It is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak either for, against, or about this resolution? Seeing no comments, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Josh Kirk, 5-0. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the new website. Diane, will you help me out with this? I know this was something that was near and dear to your heart.
Do we need a motion to pass the confirmatory?
Oh, I apologize. See, I was testing. I need a motion to approve Resolution 19-2025.
Motion to approve Resolution 19-2025.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not sure. Yeah, 5-0. Thank you very much for catching that. Now, would you like to discuss the update to the website?
Yes. Since the last notice from Councilman Morethan that he was asking the department heads to get a little bit more aggressive on getting the new website, that's in a test format right now, updated. We've made a lot of progress, from my understanding. But there was a request for a mission and a vision statement for the town of Mooresville, and I've shared that with the council members on the very last page of your packet. If you'd read those two statements, I can read it out loud, or Councilman Morethan?
Oh, no. Go ahead, please.
The mission statement, "Our municipality exists to serve the people who call this community home. Each day we work to keep our neighborhoods safe, our streets and parks well-maintained, and our shared spaces welcoming to all. We are here to listen, support, and respond to the needs of our residents while creating opportunity for growth, connection, and belonging. Together with honesty and respect, we are building a community where families can thrive, businesses can succeed, and neighbors can feel proud to live." Okay, and then the vision statement, "Our vision is to preserve the small-town character and sense of community that makes the town of Mooresville unique while embracing opportunities that enrich the lives of our residents and future generations and make them proud to call Mooresville home." I welcome any comments, any tweaking.
Comments from the board?
I'd like personally a little more time to read it over. I think a couple of things are...I'd just like more time.
Okay.
Fair.
Is that all right with the rest of the council?
That's fine.
Jeff? Jeff?
Aye.
Well, this was strictly discussion. I don't know that we really wanted to vote tonight, so let's have that on our agenda for our next meeting. I thought it was very well-written. I'm impressed.
Well, my only opinion is we're talking about creating opportunities for growth, and then kind of talk about keeping the town small. Like, I mean, I get, I mean, there's other ways of growth, I get it too, but, you know, I'm not sure we want to keep the small town, or what we...I just prefer to look at it a little more.
That'd be fantastic. Department of Head reports. Not everybody at once.
Nobody was jumping up, so I'll take the brunt of the first. All right. Phil Grunelli is Park Superintendent here for just a few updates. Park project happening at Pioneer Park is taking shape. If you haven't been over to Pioneer Park, the mountain dirt is getting smaller. We're moving that over. We're not shipping off any of the dirt part of the project. One, that saves in cost, but also opens up opportunity or opportunities for future growth of use of that dirt, but also adds a new amenity, safer amenity of a potential winter hill on our northern property, so kiddos can enjoy our winter season. Beyond that, we are setting forms and concrete this week, so things will start taking shape even more by the end of the week. The mound of mulch is currently being removed from all of our tree excavation, currently. And other than that, we are happy and eager to answer any questions that the council may have. The other update we have this evening is along with a Corson Fire and Security project. Per the request of the council, we have very diligently dove into the final checkpoints and listings of what is the last things that needs to be completed. The last camera at the firehouse has been installed and is in full operations. The last components of the wireless point-to-point connection radio signals at the park will be installed later this week, Thursday and Friday. Thursday this week, EXOS and Corson Fire Securities Professionals will be in a room solving any of the communication issues that we were having. We did, EXOS did a deep dive into the discovery of what was happening with our system. Currently, there was a cross in communication if a camera would go down off of our system or lose signal. When it came back up, it had basically a fork in the road, and it didn't know which path to take to go back to the server. That was from the existing system, so that other pathway just wasn't removed during the proper installation. That has been rectified and fixed. So every camera and every door has the direct line of communication where it needs to go to from this point, but all the other of bandwidth capabilities and also our storage capacities will all be fixed by Thursday, by end of week at the latest. But Thursday is the date that has been selected for both Corson and EXOS to work diligently on making a solution and getting it completed. Shortly after that, Corson would like to have a after-action wrap-up report. I would like to have a few members of the council during that meeting, so they can, you can hear and also speak your mind of how the project went, and especially of any things that you believe are still, need to be addressed by Corson themselves before we say this project is complete. But I'd like to answer any questions the council may have on that project.
That's my question.
So, long and short of the story, Thursday, Friday this week, we should have the remaining things completed. Other than that, that's all I have.
If he walks up and his first two words are, "I quit," no good trouble.
Good evening. So, we've got a weekend now, so we've hit the ground running. We'll take some baby steps for now, but I'm sure we'll have more as we go forward. So, Jordan helped me prepare this. So, looks like August we had 197 runs. There's a breakdown, but the big thing's coming up, the key secure systems are now in the vehicles and wired, and either done or in the process of being mounted as well. And we do have some maintenance coming up on the trucks, and then pump and ladder testing as well, which required annually for those. I'm sure I will have more in two weeks, but questions?
How was your...are they welcoming and everything?
It's fabulous. Yes. So, thank you for the opportunity, and anything else? All right. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
That's all of our department heads. Legal counsel.
So, there are two properties in the town that have liens on them from the town itself for unsafe building liens after they were demolished, after being deemed unsafe. Those two properties are now subject to a tax sale by the county, because there are also unpaid taxes on those properties. The amount, the assessment from the town on both properties, there's one at 1 East Main Street. The assessment is for $117,000, and the minimum bid at that sale is going to be $117,704.47. For the building at 3 East Main Street, the assessment from the town is $134,713.79, and the minimum bid at the sale is $136,017.26. So, if someone purchases the property at the sale, they have to pay at least that minimum bid, which means that the county's lien would be satisfied, and the town's lien would be satisfied as well. If it doesn't get sold in the sale, then the county has some options. Our advice is, at this point, is to, the sale's on the 17th, September 17th, so to allow that to go to the sale, because if someone does, in fact, purchase that property, it's got to satisfy the existing liens and the associated penalties and interest payments. There's also a chance that if it's not sold, we'll have to explore some options. One thing we discussed is reaching out to the county and seeing if there's an opportunity to, if it's not sold, then work out an agreement between the county and the town itself to try to work out an agreement to obtain those properties. So, I've looked at this today. Haley's here as well. She's looked at this also, and we're happy to answer any questions you all might have about that.
So, the starting bid, if it don't get to that, then it'll go lower?
So, the starting bid is the minimum bid, so it can't sell for less than that.
So, it can't?
On this, yep.
As long as, you know, we have $180,000 in it, so...
Last year, this came up last year, and they tried to sell one of the two parcels, and it was not, it was not at the fault of the town, it was not at the fault of the legal counsel. When they went down, they filed it, the $180,000, $90,000 on each parcel. That's kind of odd. There was one building, but there are two parcels there. So, last year they got that corrected, and they weren't going to sell that. The problem, in the past, what we always believed was this was a lien and not a tax, this wouldn't be sold as a tax sale. As long as the taxes were paid on a regular basis, there would be no sale. That this lien would stay with the property for the length of it. And apparently, they did not pay last fall's taxes, this spring's taxes. So, what happens now is, not only do we have our lien on it, we also have interest and penalties for not paying that lien. Is that correct?
That's correct.
My thoughts, or what we were always under the belief, was when this came for sale, we would go down, we would bid $180,000, we would get the property, give them, write a check to the county, the county would send it back. It would make us whole again on $180,000, but yet we would still pay $180,000 for that property compared to what it was. I guess that's a bargain, maybe. But with these extra penalties and interest, and I'm still not sure who gets the interest, I've asked Reed and Haley, and do both of them now understand what I'm saying, is that was our money, so the interest, in my opinion, is ours, but that's a state and county issue that we can address at that time. Now, what they're telling me is, if this does not sell for those minimum prices, it can't sell for any less than that. It can go above it, but it can't go below it. If it does not sell for that, then we need to go to the county and start negotiating a way that we can purchase it for the minimum amount before anyone else gets to do it. And would we have preferential treatment, since we do have the lion's share of the lien on it?
I think that's safe to assume.
So, the, under statute, they said the authorities could sell or give away the taxes for it, and they would have to notify you guys and attempt to negotiate. So, we asked them.
Well, and that's what I've asked since day one. Are we an interested party? Would we be notified first? We were never notified of this. This just happened, someone happened to stumble across it and say, "Ooh, look." So, we are, what you're saying is, we are an interested party. We would be notified before anyone else could get in there.
For the assignment of a tax sale, yes. The statute's very nitty-gritty, so at times it allows for notice before the transfer, but not until before the sale. So, when it comes to the process out where the tax sale occurred, if it gets sold, for that portion of it, before you can give away the taxes, it's assigned at times to somebody to get to someone else. They would have to notify you guys for that portion of the process. Is that what you're saying?
Nope.
Haley, can you come up?
No, I think it's... So, the statute can be kind of nitty-gritty in that for the beginning process of it, so they do not have to notify you guys before a sale occurs. They would have to notify you guys before the transfer of the property actually occurred. I don't know why it distinguishes wording that way, but it does. And that would be for the actual tax sale. For assignment of a tax certificate, which would occur after the property did not sell at the tax sale, they do have a statutory obligation to notify you before that is assigned to anybody else. So, they would say the property doesn't sell at the tax sale, they have to come to you guys first, and they'll let you know that occurred, and try to work out something with you guys first.
So, if we go down there and we bid to $200,000 that they're asking, we still don't, we still wouldn't take title of it for 365 days?
Correct.
If it does not sell for this, then with the assignment of the whatever you...
Tax certificate.
Tax certificate, will we take immediate possession of it?
I do not know that answer, but I could find out and get back to you on that one.
There'd still be redemption period, I believe.
I, that, it would be shock, I would be surprised if there wasn't still that redemption period, but I would, I don't want to say definitively without knowing for sure.
I think on mortgage, on mortgages, I thought that they were either 60 or 90 days, but I didn't know on that.
I'd have to, I'd have to look and make sure I can say definitively.
So, it won't, it won't go from a tax sale to a sheriff's sale, to where, we will have notifications and a chance or an opportunity to negotiate that.
You should. And we have a good relationship with the Morgan County Attorney to be able to kind of preemptively, if you guys so authorize, express our interests and say, you know, this is something we would want to talk about immediately if it didn't occur. So, she's a former Taft attorney, and that wouldn't be a difficult phone call for me to make, you know, as soon as you guys would like.
So, the auction or the tax sale is the 17th?
That's right.
Or 10 a.m.
So, our thought is, you know, so considering that the liens are so high, it decreases the odds it's going to sell on the 17th. So, you know, if, with your authorization, we could even start those conversations before the sale, that say, you know, in case it's not sold, what are some parameters of a deal?
Talk with the landowner, or who?
The county.
The county, is it okay? Has anybody talked to the landowner? Well, how's it got this far? Is this, I mean, obviously, he's not very good to deal with, you know, we wouldn't be in the mess we're in.
I think it went this far the minute that we hired someone to tear the buildings down. I think that, I think that's when it went that far. And then, the option was, at that point in time, after we tore it down, "Do you want to pay this?" We were told no, and that's when we filed the lien on it.
Well, yeah, I think it's sad that we had to do that. I think the property owner should have done that versus us, but we were left with no choice, obviously, you know? And, I mean, we had to shut the road down for a period of time, if you remember, because it was that unsafe, for fear it would collapse into the road. How many liens are on it, and do we know that, other than ours?
Looks like just ours. It's just ours and the county's interest and penalties, and the taxes themselves.
Taxes are not that much, so...
Can he pay the taxes and bring it back current, and we end up fighting the deal like we're dealing with on Bolton, or no?
I don't believe so, because, well, I mean, yes, he could come back in the redemption period if it was bought and pay everything off. When we talked with them back in October, there was notations made at the county level that this property owner had been communicating with them in trying to figure out the way in which he could keep paying the taxes but not have to pay the lien. So, they're being thoughtful about it, which is unfortunate, so...
Yeah. So, do we know how much are fees and all that?
For...
Interesting.
I believe it should be on the form that everybody has.
So, all in for the property on 1 East Main, it's $117,000. And then, for 3 East Main, it's $134,713.
So, that was the fees, that was everything?
That's everything. That's everything from the town itself, all in one.
So, we would have, still stand for all those penalties?
What do you mean by that?
As far as...
If we go down and buy it at the tax sale, we would have to bid the minimum.
Correct.
Yeah.
Minimum applies to everybody.
Right. And if someone bids a minimum, we're great.
Yep.
Yeah.
We get our $180,000, well, we still wait a year, but then we...
Bids the minimum?
Even with the minimum, we would still wait a year because of the redemption.
So, they would have to make up the difference between, if it goes for the minimum, starting bid on 3 was 136. What are you saying? Say that again.
So, the lien was split up, I think this is where, the lien was split up between both properties.
Okay.
So, each property has a lien of like $90,000 on each one. So, together, it would come back as 180. Yep.
And that redemption period, do these fees keep building, or?
I am not aware of that.
That's one thing we have to double-check again, is if they're still accruing during that redemption period or not.
I would, I would be, I wouldn't think so, because I bid them an amount, and that would change what the amount would be. But I'd have to check, yeah.
Is the town occurring any costs right now, continuing to pursue this, that we can go after the landowner on, or no?
Occurring any costs?
Like, right now, you guys are still working on this. I mean, is this above and beyond, or what?
They're doing this within the retainer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we filed the 180,000, when the lien, which I didn't realize it was filed that quickly, we didn't take into consideration all the legal fees and everything. $180,000 is what the gentleman paid to tear it down and flatten it. So, everyone's getting a bargain on this one, except for us, I think. So, you know, from the council, I think we need to move as promptly as possible. If it sells on the 17th, we're great. In a year, we'll be great.
We could start those conversations as soon as, this week, with our contacts. Just so they know what we're thinking. That way, if, if it doesn't sell on the 17th, we're, you know, we're hopefully, we're close to, we have an idea of where both parties stand.
My biggest fear was someone could go down there and bid $100,000 on both of them, $50,000 apiece, and then we would get a prorated portion of that sale price to cover our $90,000. They're assuring me that that's not how the statute is doing.
Yeah, the statute requires that it has to be sold at the minimum bid, and that accounts for the liens on the property. I couldn't, that's in the statute. I called the county, talked to them a few times, confirmed that with them as well. And they directed me to their, to the website from the auction, which lists the minimum price, which accounts for both.
And because the delinquent taxes on this are so low, the county doesn't have a strong interest, because they're not out a lot of money here, right? It's you guys that have the lien on it. So, I think we'd be in a decent bargaining position if this doesn't sell, so...
But a possibility is, before it comes to sale, he could pay, come current on the taxes, and we're back to square one.
So, I don't think he could just pay the taxes and that would change it. It's our belief that, so that when this came up for tax sale in October of last year, he was not delinquent, or the LLC was not delinquent on any of the taxes. It was the unpaid penalties on your guys' lien that put it into tax sale.
What's the difference between this property and Bolton Avenue? Because hasn't that gone to sale too?
Bolton Avenue was sold on property tax only.
Yep.
It was bid up, way above the tax bill, and the owners had that one-year redemption period, but all they had to do was go down and bid and pay the taxes and penalty.
Taxes.
The county had held in escrow the amount above those taxes, and they returned those to the bidder. They returned all the money to the bidder, plus, I think, entrance, interest. But that was on the, that was on a tax sale only. That was not a lien sale.
Okay, okay.
So, we'd like authorization to reach out to the county, begin those discussions about reaching an agreement if this property is not sold at the September 17 tax sale.
I'll make a motion that the attorneys move forward to work with the county to be as aggressive as we can on this property.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Josh, Greg, 5-0. Do you have anything else?
That's all.
Public comments. Anyone here for the good of the order? Motion for approval of payment of claims. In the claims, gentlemen, there is a, there is an Amerisco bill. I told you last week that we had a drum roll, and it was the last bill from Amerisco. Apparently, we didn't pay the next to the last one, and they didn't fall for the propaganda that we were making the last payment. So, they did say, "Hey, you missed this one, pay." So, there is a, there is an Amerisco bill in there.
Yeah. Move to approve claims in the amount of $1,260,233.06.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Greg, Josh, 5-0.
Motion to approve payroll clearing in the amount of $276,607.09.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Josh, or Greg, Josh, 5-0 again. Town Council comments. Jeffrey?
I have none.
Kirk?
None.
Josh?
None.
Greg?
Uh, nope. Thank you.
Our next meeting is September 16th. The year is dwindling away on us, so... Our next meeting is September sixteenth, the year is dwindling away on us, so before you know it, it'll all be over. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and taken, it all in favor? Aye. Josh Kirk, five oh.
I still don't understand how, how they can have...